Good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Monday, November 2nd, 2020. I would note that council members, Gadeela and Sternad are joining us via Zoom. And those of you joining us from home, welcome. Okay. As we look at our agenda, the first item marked for discussion is a presentation on the timeline for updating the zoning map. Mr. Trey Hart, are you with us?
I am. Yes, Your Honor, I just, I wanted to take a couple of minutes here at the beginning of the meeting, just to let everybody know where we are with updating the zoning map. And I only bring this forward, I know at the last meeting when Mr. Green was presenting his discussion item related to self-storage, he was drawing on the conclusion that he wasn't sure on the exact timeline for that. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to let you know and kind of revisit what we talked about formally, and that was that we're going to be bringing forward the zoning map by Ward as we, as we can. It's going to take a little bit of time in doing it in this manner, but we feel that this is the best way and the most prudent way to do it in this environment that we're working in now. So last month at Planning Commission, we had a public hearing regarding the zoning map update for Ward 2. At the next city council meeting, we will be doing a set date for public hearing for the first for the first meeting in December, December 3rd, in which we'll have a public hearing regarding that map amendment. And then we will proceed to have the second or first, second and third hearings to adopt that map as ordinance. At the same time, we will then start doing the notices and proceeding to do the next ward, which we've Ward 4, and we will likely do that in January. So as we proceed, we'll be adopting Ward by zoning, the zoning map will be adopted by Ward over a period of few months. I'm not laying out a specific timeline because we want to make sure that we have the time and the, we're doing things appropriately as we move through each of these presentations and adoptions. In this day and age, it's, it's difficult to hold public input to have the forums and, and availability for the public to be available for, for all the discussions that need to take with regard to these. So this Ward 2 is going to be our first try at this, as you can imagine, trying to involve, you know, essentially 25% community in a public hearing is going to be difficult. If we did the entire map at one meeting, that would be entirely more different, difficult, I believe. So this is the way we've, we've identified moving forward. And I just wanted to, you know, give the council a little update on where we are. So I'll be looking for a set date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of the zoning map for Ward 2 at the next meeting and then holding a public hearing for that first meeting in December.
Okay, any questions for Tom? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Harper.
Tom, a question that I have is with Ward 2 being first to go through the, the total process, is it your expectation that the individual wards will reach a final state of approval in some sequence? And then be effective upon their final date of approval, or will the entire city, all wards, once they've gone through the process, having a future effective date?
No, each, each ward would be approved at a different date.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just reiterate, the ordinance surrounding the zoning map is adopted. We're just adopting the zoning map. The map actually has the zoning district boundaries on it. And so each property is currently zoned. We, Ward 2 would be, the rezoning would occur and the ordinance is in place. So we're not changing the holistic ordinance for each one of these. So it, it there's not a difference between zoning the entire city and the ward at, at one time or another in that regard, so.
Okay, other questions for Tom? All right, thank you, Tom. Moving on with the agenda, under the consent agenda, nothing is marked for discussion by staff until F5 on page 6. Is there anything prior to that item? That anyone would like to discuss in particular?
Would you like me to proceed, Mayor?
Yes, sir. What's that?
Would you like me to proceed with item F5?
Let me just make sure that no one has any questions on any items prior to that. Okay, go ahead, proceed with item F5, Tom.
Yes, Your Honor. So as indicated in the staff report on October 14th, Marion Municipal Airport Committee met, and one of the items that's been discussed at that committee level for quite some time has been the desire to have an airport impact study completed to understand the effect the airport has on local economy and be able to make informed decisions as, as the committee moves forward. So they, they did at their last meeting recommend that the city council proceed to solicit proposals for an airport economic impact study. And this is just the receive and file on that. I guess, you know, the staff has not spent a lot of time understanding what that means at this point. And so if there is a desire for the council to move forward and have that completed, the, the action that I would see moving that off-center would be to direct staff to, to proceed with researching that and bringing it back to the council for, for further deliberation.
For discussion on that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the mayor pro temp.
Okay, so on this item, I'll ask one question first. And that is, when the airport layout plan was done a few years back that we discussed a couple of years ago, was there an economic study done prior to that or as part of that airport layout plan?
As I recall, there was not. Lon was a little involved in that discussion. There may have been some high levels, but it wasn't a specific impact study. Lon, I don't know if you think more on that.
Yeah, there were discussions about the overall economic impact to that scale of an airport and what it could bring to the community, but it didn't go, for example, say, step by step or stage by stage to say, this is what the community could expect to see by making this investment into the runway or into the, making this investment into the airport. I think with this one, that's more what they're seeking is to really understand, you know, the ALP really contemplated a lot of different investments to a pretty large number to the airport, but without really understanding which ones of those might have the best ROI. Based on an economic impact study, it's just very hard to make recommendations.
Okay, got it?
Yeah, I, I generally agree with Lon's view of that. As I've reviewed the ALP, it did make some arms-length projections relative to increased landings. But a feature of economic impact analyses for airports, as I've researched this a little bit, is to talk about claimments, which is a slightly different metric than it just takeoffs and landings, because it talked, that's a, claimments tries to measure the individual by person load that the airport supports over time. So I think, at least from my vantage point, and what I've reviewed and heard the committee speak to at its last meeting, I think this is certainly, I would echo, it's a prudent action to take in order to then have a meaningful impact to any future investments in the airport.
Okay, any other questions or comments by the council?
Yeah, I do, Steve.
Go ahead, Renee.
So I noticed in the agenda memo that we could direct staff to give a cost estimate. I'd be curious about the cost estimate as well as since all we own is the runway and not a flight school or any other building structures. If any of those people, those partners in this would help to share the cost of the study since they would benefit from it as well.
It's a good question. And I would imagine that the study would also have to get into the fact that other studies, when you talk about the economic impact analysis, does it have an impact on the analysis when a city does not own the entire airport? Because I think the situation in a lot of the smaller city airports is that the city owns 100% of it. We've got a unique situation with that with the situation that we have, and I think that may have to have some consideration if we're going to do that kind of a study. Any other comment? One more?
Just, just to tag on to Renee's comment, I think another stakeholder, I don't think I heard their name, but Medco would certainly be a beneficiary of this.
Sure, okay. All right. Move the meeting back to the mayor.
Nothing else is marked on that page for discussion? Anything you know would like to discuss in particular? If not, moving on to A1 of the regular agenda. Under Administrative Services?
Your, Your Honor, this is me, Amal. Given the magnitude of the derecho impact, staff is recommending engaging experts in the grants management and disaster recovery field. We did put an RFP out and we've received a proposal from Title Basin Government Consultant. Through this agreement or contract, Title Basin will serve as advocates, advisors, and will help us navigate federal requirement in regard to FEMA process, accounting, documentation. They'll be working alongside staff with the goal to maximize our reimbursement. Staff will manage this contract through a task order system.
Okay, questions for Ms. Eltaher on this? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Amal, just one question. What, how would you describe the, the profile of their work effort? Will they be onsite, offsite, or a mix of, of presence here in Marion?
It will be mixed. There were proposing a shared model or where they'll be here when we need them. They'll be here attending all meetings with FEMA. They'll be expected to manage the FEMA Grants Portal on our behalf. They'll be back and forth here with us. If they needed to meet with staff, they'll be here. Otherwise, everything is going to be virtual. But they'll be working alongside us through the whole process.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Will.
So it says here that the cost of the service is eligible for FEMA grant reimbursement. Is that 100% reimbursement?
That would be 75% of the cost. So we are still expected to cover our local share. The state is expected to cover 10%.
Other questions?
Your Honor, just to comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the questions I did have was, you know, what's their experience and kind of what's, what's the scope of their corporation or business? I did spend a little time and examined their website, and it appears to be a substantial experience base with all sorts of governmental assistance and coordination in terms of has been, has been described here. So I guess the real question is, is that if it weren't for this firm or a similar firm, this, this work would have to be performed internally, correct?
Yes.
Can't do it.
Well, and just to add one thing, I mean, oftentimes, one of the real values that a firm like this can bring to the table is knowing all the intricacies of FEMA to ensure that we get better cost recovery than you might otherwise have. So there are probably going to be places along here where, you know, an item might be misclassified or we miss something that they can suggest that we make sure is submitted as part of our claim. So we would actually end up recovering more than we would have left to our own devices.
Definitely. They, they will help us maximize our reimbursement. And I did learn that Lynn County hired them as well to cover this derecho impact.
I'm astounded because I thought our city manager's office was the paragon of virtue in terms of cost recoveries.
We try, but I'm not even ready to start diving into FEMA yet.
We can. I, I think we can, except that it's a lot of documentation going through the accounting of everything. And FEMA wanted everything in a special form. So a lot of this is going to be reviewing our project sheets that we already developed through the staff, the reviewing them to maximize our reimbursement. So they'll advise us on the eligibility for reimbursement and then assessing the loss itself. And then helping with the proper documentation, because everything is contingent on us documenting those losses.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? All right, thank you. Nothing else is marked on that page under Administrative Services or Public Services or Public Safety. Any of those items that anyone would like to discuss or have any questions in particular? Okay, we'll move on to Engineering.
Yes, Your Honor. So Thursday, we will have a 14 public hearings regarding the library bid packages with the construction manager style project. Each one is its individual project. These are still out for bid or soon to be released to bid. So there's some miscommunication as far as the timing. So we've already published these, and so we need to have the public hearings. And then we will keep this open until December 17th, when we get the bids in.
There'll be a separate public hearing for each of those items?
Correct.
Mike, okay. 14 public hearings. Okay, any questions for Mike on that? Okay, next item, E2.
So E2 is just one public hearing, and that is for the 10th and 10th roundabout. So converting the existing signal to a roundabout. Terrell, if you can go to the next slide. So there's the overview of it. North is to the right. So it'll be the, the roundabout. And then if you can go to the next slide. So we received four bids for this project with Ratchee Construction being the low bid at $543,834.94, which was 88.72 of the engineer's estimate. It has a start date of 6/21/21, which is currently based on the school schedule. If we need to adjust that because of COVID or delays in the schools, we'll work that out with the contractor at that time. But that's the latest information that we have as far as, because this will be a complete close down of that intersection. We wanted to wait till school is done for the season. There are only 35 working days to complete that project, and there's $1,500 per day in liquidated damages. So we are recommending moving forward with Ratchee Construction.
Great. Okay, questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, just a question, and you sort of got to it. That's a very important, critical intersection for movement of traffic about town. I guess the question I have is, is, is $1,500 a day, given the scope of the work, appropriate? Or should it be higher, given the criticality of the intersection?
So that was the number that we came up with. It's, it's very hard to justify going much higher than that, because that is the number that the DOT uses on federal projects. So it's very hard to go even higher than that, because that would be a primary. And they obviously would have more impact on a primary, even though this is an important intersection for the city of Marion. Obviously, I-80 or 380 sees more traffic than we do at 10th and 10th.
Okay, and as you said that, I seem to recall that maybe you commented to me previously on that, so thanks.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Barklow? What, E3?
So that's just, E3 is then would be actually awarding the contract then. So who is the public hearing? Just one of them. And E3 would be the awarding the contract.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Mike. On to Community Development, F1.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Gary.
So every three years, we update our, our codes. We're currently on the 2017 National Electrical Code. We're asking to update to the 2020. Like I said, we do it every three years. We actually try and do it early in the year. In fact, we had it scheduled for March, and then with the whole pandemic and the contractors were saying they couldn't get code update classes. So we decided we would just push it back. Now it's time that we want to try and get it done. There's been code update classes for the, for the contractors. So we're going to try and move forward. The Construction Code Review Board has looked at the ordinance, and they give us their recommendation. I've sent it to the State Electrical Board, and they've given it their blessing. Don't you remember if it ever came up, but we had some issues with some of the items on our past ordinance that were less restrictive than what the state was asking for. So they kind of got honest about that. So we pulled those items off of the current ordinance. We have sent notices out to all the electrical contractors, actually all the contractors, general contractors, electric contractors. We have sent notice to the Home Builders Association. We were doing this, and heard back from no one. The reason we do this is, there's a lot of times, there's new technology that's, that's has come about, and we want to try and get that new technology in the code as soon as we can. So the, the electrical, the National Electrical Code Board always tries to update and get, get the new technology in. So we want to try and make sure that we are are on the, on the forefront of that. It also addresses, sometimes there are hazards that appear after the code's been out for a while and things that pop up. So there's a lot of times, there's corrections to that. Then the other thing is that we do have a few amendments in here that are actually more restrictive than what the National Electrical Code is. And it deals mostly with multifamily. And we've been doing a lot of multifamily here the last few years. We didn't want to pull those items out of the code and make the multifamily less safe than what it is now. It's one of those things that we always, we always want to try and make our buildings in, in Marion safer for the, for the public. So that's kind of why we do these every three years, so.
Okay.
But, any questions?
I, I just have a question. Are there additional considerations that were brought on by the derecho, or is that?
Not on the electrical, no. That's pretty much straightforward. We will be going forward with our other codes, building codes and stuff after the first of the year, probably somewhere around March. There are some things that we'll be addressing on those that will do directly tie in with the deratio, so.
Okay. Any questions for Gary? Okay, thank you, Gary.
Yeah, no problem.
That should take care of F2 also. So F3? Is that, is that Tom?
Yeah, well, we'll hold a public hearing regarding the naming of Deal Court. I think we talked about this last meeting. It's, we're holding a public hearing. The code requires us to do so, so we'll proceed in that manner. We, we've not heard any any issues regarding this.
Okay, questions for Tom on that? Okay, thanks, Tom. F4 is not marked well, but I guess that's also Deal Court, sorry. Proving the name, okay. Under G, Library, nothing, it's not, there's one item that's not marked. Anyone have a question on that? All right, we'll move on to other department discussions. The first item is is marked Building Department Update on Insurance Service Organization Review.
Yeah, thank you again. So the ISO or the Insurance Service Organization or Office, they do an audit on building departments every three years. Actually, this one's been a little bit longer than that. It serves the property casualty insurance industry is what they actually are doing. It assigns a classification somewhere between 1 and 10 to every, every jurisdiction, whether it's Building Department, I, directly if I'm wrong, I think Fire Department goes through the same thing. This year, they finished ours in, on May 8th. And their grading program is called the Building Code Effectiveness Rating Schedule, so a lot of words there. So Marion, in Marion, the Building Department received a Class 4 for one and two family dwellings. We received Class 3 for all other constructions, including commercial, industrial, and multifamily. We have a little bit of room for improvement, but this is actually what we had the last time when they did the the grading on us. And, and I don't think that's real bad for what, all, all the things that have happened here in the last three years. So Terrell, can I have the next slide? Terrell, can I have the next slide? So what, what we do is, they have a maximum point possible through the middle there. And then our grading is for twenty twenty is on the left, and the previous grading is on the, on the right. And then the difference, obviously. So the administration, we've actually improved what we, what we have done. You can see a one point five six in both commercial and residential. The adopted codes hasn't changed, because we always adopt as soon as we can. The only other thing that really changed was our training has, has went up a lot, three point five. We always try and push our inspectors to get more training. The certifications has went down. A lot of that is due to the former building official, Ron Hoover, had retired, and he had quite a number of certifications. So when we, when he retired, we lost his certifications, but we picked up a few from the other inspectors that are getting theirs. So I look for that in the future to be much better than it is. And then the building officials qualifications, obviously, when he had, Ron had been here for a number of years. And when he retired and I took over my building experience, my building official experience was low. I've been doing this for twenty years, but I hadn't been a building official for, for more than like three now. So that is obviously a little lower. Next slide, Terrell. So some of the other areas, our plan review, our commercial plan review has went down a little, the residential has went up. All the inspectors are doing, are doing plan review now. That has went up a little, commercials went down, obviously. Mr. Hoover had some certifications in plan reviews, so another reason why that should come up following years. The performance evaluation has went down, and I'm not exactly sure, I, I looked into that, but I really didn't determine what exactly runs that. So I'm not sure why that's down. Next slide, please. Our field inspections actually went down, and if you look at our managing inspection or reinspection activity, we dropped there and we dropped on the inspection checklist. Now, I'm not sure why either one of those went down. I can guarantee you they will not be that low next time, because we use checklist and we use a lot of reinspections in our, in our New World system. So I'm not sure why those are where they're at, but they are. So again, in performance, what I do from now, the last couple of years, I've been, I do performance reviews. I, I ask the inspectors specifically to get new certifications every year. So that, that should be, never should be that low again. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about, this is actually when the building codes were adopted. You see, we, on the commercial, we got an eight point O and the residential a seven point six. You look at the other jurisdictions, we're above county, we're above state, and we're above national, so I always, I felt that was very good. Next slide. Commercial certification, so this is actually grading us on how many certifications that our inspectors have for commercial work. And you see that we're pretty good on, on everything through there. Again, we're, we're better than county, state, and national, but we've been, been able to, you know, carry some good certifications. Couple of the inspectors have gotten some that's helped, I have mine, and we obviously lost Mr. Hoover, so we, we're still good there. Next slide, Terrell. Residential certifications, we have a little work to do on this. We're actually, other than electrical, we're right up there with, with everybody else, because the state requires us to have electrical certifications for our inspectors. So that's why that's, that's higher, we've been pushing hard to get those done. The other ones are a little bit low, but they'll be going up, because we're really pushing hard to get certifications for our inspectors, so. Next slide. So I wanted to talk this a little bit about, about permits. So permits by the year. You kind of look there, we're, we're always staying fairly level every year. Twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen dipped a little, twenty in the first three months, or the first nine months of the year, ten months of the year, excuse me. We've had, we've had over six thousand permits. A lot of that is due to our, our storms, a hailstorm. We have just about three thousand re-ripping permits, four hundred for siding, and about three hundred and fifty so far for the deratio repairs. I'm, I'm quite certain that that number will still be pretty heavy going into next year, because a lot of the people aren't getting work done as soon as they hoped, and contractors are busy. So we're looking probably in the next spring or, or even summer for a lot of stuff gets done. I get the next slide. This is residential permits by the year, and I just wanted to, to show the, the, the multi, or not the multi, but all the family dwellings, so like townhouses. You can see, started out in sixteen and seventeen, where they had twenty-five and six, kind of dipped off, come back up a little bit this year. Multifamily has always been fairly low, because it, we don't do a lot of multifamily, but it seems like we're adding a lot of rental housing units. And this is, this is starts, and it actually doesn't reflect the number of units that these buildings have. And then the single family that are detached is a single family dwelling. We've always stayed really well, I mean, last year we dipped down a little bit to one twenty-three, we've already done a hundred and fifty-six this year. And I know some more that are coming in, so that'll be above, that'll be our best year in the last five. And then single family attached is like duplexes, townhouses, that kind of thing. We are actually doing more now, we've done ten, and that, that is not how many units. So that ten could be actually thirty, it probably is close to thirty housing units, because there would be like, some will be duplexes, some will be three, and there are some fours out there. So it really doesn't reflect the amount of housing units we have, just, just the amount of starts we've had. Next slide. This is commercial. So we've stayed fairly steady until the last couple of years, but the last couple of years, we've had, we've had larger projects starting. You know, for instance, in twenty nineteen, we had, we had both the new schools started. So that really is why the, the numbers are down, but the, if you look at our, our, I was, I was looking at today, our assessed value of permits, we're always running between seventeen and a half million to twenty-two million the last five years, actually the last, last ten years. So it's really, it really stays along, so your, your housing sometimes is a little bit lower. And then your, your commercial will, now has been picking it up and has been carrying the, the load, even though the housing is, some of it's been slowed down a little bit, so. Think I have one more yet. Nope, I guess I don't. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, any of this. I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on, on how our, our permits are doing. Which stay a steady, and, and actually, this year has been a crazy year, so.
Gary, I just wanted to, to add on a little bit, that, that permit, that permit information, I just want the council to know that the staff has been phenomenal through all of these events, you know, the deratio is really, you know, taking the, the front seat. But if you recall the hailstorm, we were, we were, we were way, way behind and really struggling to keep up when the hailstorm hit, and then deratio hit. So, you know, I just, you know, kudos to our, our, our building permits, our, our building inspectors out in the field, and our, and our permit tax, you know, we're, we're using, we still have the, to permit tax, Amma, the admin for the department is, has been doing what she can. I, I can't say that this is not impacting the department. We're, we're a little bit behind in our, our rental housing administration, and so that there's some numbers that are kind of down in that regard, but we're, we're doing what we can to keep up, and, you know, we did have to bring on a temp for a while to keep up, to get some backlog taken care of. And additionally, during, during and after the deratio, we were, we had some part-time, or we had, not part-time, we had library staff helping out. So we're, we're treading water, but this is, this is obviously impactful for the department. And I just want to, you know, you guys to know that the, the staff has been great throughout this whole situation, and those numbers are pretty phenomenal, so.
Well, Gary, thank you for all your work, and please pass on to the department our appreciation. We know this has been a unusual year and created a lot of work for everyone, so we, we thank you and appreciate all your work. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hanson? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Gary, Steve Johnson, a comment or question I have about those ratings at the beginning, where you said the rating for residential is a four and for commercial was a three.
Right.
As you gave your report, it kind of came across that the ratings are more about the certifications that individuals have, rather than the quality of the work that the department is doing. Am I correct in hearing that?
Well, it, it's a little bit of everything on that. It, it is kind of geared, kind of heavy toward the education and the certifications of the inspectors. But there is, there is a lot in there on, and I can give you the whole report, it's, it's like sixty-seven pages, and I just tried to take out what I could and not making this long. But it does talk about inspections. There were, we really didn't have any real changes on any of our inspections, the quality inspections. It, it talks about how many inspections should be done every, every day by how many inspectors. And we're right on board with that, we have for the city of our size. So I guess I, I can, if you want me to, I can sure share the whole report to you, but it is, it is quite lengthy.
Well, where do you go forward with this? So is, is it, since the numbers were the same as it was four years ago? Are you telling us that those numbers are sufficient and adequate for the city of Marion? Or do we need a goal somehow to implement some changes so that those ratings can be increased when twenty twenty-four comes about?
Well, we're always trying to, to improve our rating on that. No, I don't think a four is acceptable, I think a three is. Very few building departments will end up with a, with a two. That's one of the things that I've seen in around, in Iowa, I've seen very few that have ever had a two. Most of everybody is around three and some are higher. But I, I do think that our residential will pick up, and I think there's a lot of, to do with the amount of inspections. Now we have, I think, my feeling is we have the right amount of inspectors to do the residential and commercial work. So I think we're right online there, so I don't, I think those numbers will come up.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, if I may, I did, I, I did have experience working on ISO and accreditation. I think it, it doesn't talk about the quality of work itself, it's mainly about standards and expectations. But I think, because we have combination inspections here, other departments that have specialized work, that have electrical inspectors and mechanical and those kind of things. We have, we send out one inspector to do the various trades. It doesn't talk about the quality itself. It's mainly about standards in general, overall, I think we're doing well here.
Other questions for Gary or Tom?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Gary. My question was on your first couple of slides, and you were talking about Mr. Hoover's departure and his, a lot of credentials, you know, walked out of the door with him. And so my question is, I know you said that you're, you know, adding to your certifications, you know, to fill that void. But if you hit the lottery, I just want to make sure we're prepared and you're deepening the bench, so to speak, on other staff also working toward these special certifications, so that if you become a billionaire overnight, we're not in a, in a ditch in terms of the level of training and qualifications. And if it's a funding issue, then I would just ask for this to be specifically pointed out when we look at those line items for professional development and certifications by department. This, obviously, there's a need here to make sure everybody has all that they can have to make our department as good as it can be. So I certainly want to make sure that council's supportive of the funds that you need to do that. But I also want to make sure that you have staff following along with you in obtaining these more specialized certifications.
Yeah, and you're right, and I think our training staff is, is, or budget is pretty good. As you see, we, we, actually, the amount of hours in, in, in training we've done, we, we raised that a three point five, both residential, commercial. Now I just, now that we have a, a fourth inspector doing, doing spite inspections, I think we can get these guys to take a little time to get their certifications. I think that's one of the things that we've always, we've always pushed for that, but we've now built it into their, their performance reviews and asked them to get it certifications. It just gives the, the building department a better, not really reputation, but gives us the, the qualifications to, you know, back the, back the, the inspection. So we really are pushing for that, and, and I don't think I'm gonna, you have to worry too much, my luck does not make it so I'll be a millionaire or billionaire overnight. So I don't think we have anything to worry about there, but it would be nice, but I don't think so. But I do agree, we, we need to get, we need to get more certifications for sure. So that was one of the things that, when, when this report came out and I looked at it, I thought, wow, we're really lower than all the jurisdictions around us and, and statewide. And so we have a little work to do, so.
Well, good, I'm glad you're using this tool for the right purpose, obviously, and taking that information and making a change. I love that it's part of people's performance expectations, that's a great carrot to dangle. It's not like it costs them anything, since it's something that is provided through the department budget, so thank you for your leadership on that.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is a COVID nineteen update, is that Mr. Plakod?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So this is an area, as you can see on this screen, that the trends are not working in our favor. And we have made a couple of pivots internally on how we're dealing with this. One is to make some operational changes to, again, try to minimize potential exposure by simply reducing the number of people in meetings and the number of times that people are actually getting together. One of the things that's really changed that is that the CDC issued updated guidance on what constitutes a close contact. Prior to the change, a close contact was considered to be any time that you spend fifteen minutes within six feet of someone. It was not a consideration whether you're wearing masks or whether both people were wearing masks, but they changed that definition to make it cumulative. So now it's fifteen minutes in an extended period. So if you spend fifteen minutes with someone within twenty-four hours, that's considered to be a close contact. So we're also entering a period of the year that we haven't really had to deal with this yet. Thankfully, in all my time with Marion, we haven't had a pandemic winter before, so this is a little bit of a first for. Thankfully, in all my time with Marion, we haven't had a pandemic winter before. So this is a little bit of a first for us. So looking at what we need to do to pivot, pivot our operations to make sure that as we move into those things, particularly, uh, snow emergencies and snow removal events, that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we protect our staff. The last change that we've made is that we've started doing employee notifications internally. So if someone calls over to HR and reports a case, um, we're doing the notifications of the people inside the city that they may have come in contact with, rather than reporting that to, uh, say Lynn County Public Health and having them do it. Um, it's not an indictment of Lynn County Public Health, but what you would discover is that, um, if we reported it to them, they'd have to contact us to find out, okay, who was that person on shift with anyway? Um, so it was just adding time into the equation. So we wanted to be able to do that on our own. Um, we'll evaluate that over the next couple of weeks to see what kind of a workload it potentially creates and then see if there might be other options, if it's something that's just too much for us to be able to handle on our own. Um, but we do have, hopefully, in the next month or so, some additional HR help coming on as well with the, uh, HR manager position being advertised and Kirsten working on that. So just wanted to see if anybody had any particular questions. Um, after we adopt the new COVID policy, we will be, um, pushing that out to the staff and we're going to provide some opportunities to do some Q and A, uh, for people that have questions about it. As we move into winter and as the potential for exposure has gone, has gone up, we have encountered a lot more questions.
Okay, questions for Lon? Okay, thank you, Lon.
Yep.
Okay, item number three is marked for discussion, which is, uh, the self-storage project at one fifty-one and thirteen. Is that back to Tom?
At the last meeting, uh, there was some, uh, a presentation by Seth Green regarding, uh, self-storage project that he's proposing on the corner one fifty-one thirteen. Uh, I think the council heard, heard from him, but there was a discussion, there, there was a desire to have further discussion, I believe, and, um, because it was not a published agenda item, uh, there was a, a request to put this on the agenda for discussion. I know Seth is available, in the, the audience, if there's, uh, a desire to hear from him. Um, one thing I just, I would just point out that it, it, the discussion at the last meeting has surrounded a, a number of different things, but specifically though, how, uh, self-storage is, is regulated in the current zoning versus the proposed zoning. Um, and Seth was given, um, essentially, you know, two options and how he can proceed. One is to ask that the property be rezoned to a manufacturing district where it would be a permitted use, or to, to ask that the, uh, regional business district be amended or, um, to allow self-storage in some capacity. Uh, so those were the two options that have been identified for him. Uh, and I've talked to him since, uh, since that meeting. And, uh, you know, we're kind of indicated that, uh, we'd like to know the desire of the city council on how to proceed with that. Um, I don't know if, if you want to hear from him or not at this point.
Okay, so this is the time to ask your questions of Tom and come up with. Go ahead.
So Tom, you had recommended in your memo, um, about staff taking some time to review how other communities have regulated self-storage.
Correct.
Can you just talk a little bit more about that and kind of what your thoughts are regarding regulating self-storage?
So yeah, so in the past, we've had, uh, quite a bit of conversation, I'll say, regarding self-storage throughout the community. Currently, it's allowed in our, our commercial district. And, uh, there's a lot of it throughout the community. And, you know, I, I can't quantify whether there's a lot more than other communities or not. I'll just say there's a lot of self-storage in the community. Um, uh, several years ago, there was a moratorium placed on self-storage in portions of the community. And so when the zoning ordinance was being rewritten, that was a topic that was brought up and it was desired at that time to keep it in the industrial areas or the manufacturing areas. Uh, obviously, uh, this project is, is much different than I would say the traditional storage that we've seen. Uh, additionally, we've seen, uh, the, uh, other project, uh, proposed in the Business Park, um, which is, has got some, uh, similar aspects with two, two, three-story, um, uh, self-storage. And, and so there's been a change in the environment. Obviously, when you rewrite a zoning code, it's very difficult to hit every industry and, and, and be able to respond to every change in the market. So I, I don't believe, um, the direction would be to rezone the corner of one fifty-one and Highway thirteen to manufacture. I, 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 you know, that was discussed internally. Staff did not support that. We did not propose that that be a manufacturing area on the, uh, at the, at the onset of the zoning change. And, and I don't, and I can tell you that our, our opinion has not differed in that regard. So, um, uh, and the planning commission supports, uh, that corner being commercial. Um, that being said, the direction that, um, you know, that we can do to do some research is to understand what other communities have done in light of some of the changes in the industry. Um, particularly those that have a retail component to them, those that have indoor storage. Um, obviously this one we're looking at as a completely different design aesthetic, um, than any other self-storage facility that we've seen, uh, locally. Um, it's a larger scale. Uh, it's got an office. Um, it's, you can unload internally. So I think there's some design aspects of this that are, that are substantially different than, uh, a, a storage facility that is, uh, does not have office hours, is not have managed, um, uh, entrance and access on a daily basis. And so, um, allow, I think if there was some direction from the council to staff to proceed to take a look at what other ordinances are doing, we've, we've looked at Cedar Rapids. Um, they allow it in their commercial districts. There are some design standards that are, are placed within it. And so we just, uh, think that of those two options that, that we've provided, and I, I don't really think there are other options, um, that that would be the one that, uh, would be the, the best directed. And then we could bring that back to the city council for discussion, uh, outline our research, um, and then if there's a desire to move forward with an ordinance amendment, then that would go back to the planning commission for review, public hearing, and then brought back to city council for final approval. Does that help explain a little bit?
No, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, Steve, a couple of comments. First of all, my initial reaction when I heard, uh, talk about a storage facility out in that corner was no way because I'm not, you know, to me, that's one of our key corners to the entrance to our community. Uh, on the other hand, and seeing what he's proposing, it's certainly a higher end. I still do intend to go up to look at his facility that he said he had at San Marnon and Highway twenty to see how that looks, uh, because that'd probably be a similar intersection to what this one is. Uh, but I certainly would not support any manufacturing. I think that does need to be a commercial corner. And as that corner succeeds, I believe the Highway thirteen going further, uh, south where you have the exterior storage facility will eventually become something, uh, better than what it is today as well. So to me, I think it's a situation where we want to make sure that that corner is well-suited for what we put in there and will help encourage, uh, better development around it. So, uh, at, at first I was going to say no way. I'm up to an open mind, but have not decided. I would say yes for this.
Yeah, Tom, this is Grant. Um, I guess one of the thoughts I have is I think if, if we can complete whatever necessary research to benchmark what appropriately situated other communities are doing and have an understanding of that perhaps as fast as our next council meetings, that would be useful because I think it gets to the, partly the fundamental, uh, question that Steve was getting to. But also I just think in being responsible, uh, to Mr. Green, I think, I, I forget when he first really brought this to us, but, um, it seemed to me there was a time sensitivity there that he was trying to uh, meet in terms of acquisition of the property and the like. So it is, is, can the appropriate research be done quickly enough to give us some feedback at next meeting?
Yeah, like I said, we've already started. I kind of anticipated that there would be a, a good discussion about this. Uh, I, I think I have a pretty good feeling about what, um, self-storage folks are a little more, uh, apt and not really like and those that they are. And so I, we, we have done, done a little research on it. Um, the, and we can bring that forward. Now, that being said, um, any indication that the council provides would just be direction to proceed with an ordinance amendment. The planning commission would still have to review that, make recommendation, and then it would come back to the council. I, I mean, you can ask Mr. Green what his timetable is, but, you know, uh, until the ordinance is final, the ordinance isn't the ordinance. So that's the difficulty, I would say, in, in the timing of this. Um, but, you know, clearly, I, I don't think this is a, a huge task to undertake. I think we got some good direction on it. We can, we can bring it back um, for, for a discussion item. So, and get some direction back from the planning commission.
I have a couple, um, things on this, please. One is just a question and then a few comments. Um, didn't we talk recently about a storage facility near the police department in the M E C maybe? Or am I, did I dream something?
Nope. No, that project was approved and, and brought forward.
And that's a different zone than this corner?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, so, you know, a couple of thoughts. I'm not into spot zoning. I think everybody, uh, who can hear this call knows that. So I really feel strongly that, um, you know, if Mr. Green wants to put this facility, which is a beautiful facility on the corner right now, he's able to do that. And yes, it would be a legal non-conforming use as soon as we rezone. Um, I'm assuming because it's taken quite a while, we've spent years now on this rezoning and, and researching. And so I'm assuming that we've already looked at what other communities are doing in areas like this and have determined that commercial is what is going to be best here. So I'm, you know, I'm not for, um, making any kind of amendment to what we are about to do anyway. I want us to stay focused on the big picture, which is rezoning the city of Marion for what's best for the city of Marion. Aside from a single project like this coming in, nothing against Mr. Green's project. Like I said, I think this is a great-looking facility. But if we as a, um, a professional organization have decided that these types of structures belong somewhere else, then we should put them where we thought they belonged before this application came our way. So, um, you know, it's certainly in Mr. Green's prerogative to do this while we have not changed the rules yet. Um, and, you know, it's, it's totally, there's nothing wrong with that, but he does run that risk of in the future, um, the type of use that it would be. And, um, that's, I think that's all I have to say on that. Thanks.
Sure. So I, I too would be in support of the staff doing a little bit of work. And if I understood what Tom had shared is that their information could be available for us to review at the next city council meeting in two weeks, which I think would be helpful. Not suggesting we need to adjust or change the way in which we do our processes and taking it through the planning and zoning commission or anything like that. But if I understand, Tom, you had said you could get that information to us in a couple of weeks to review to talk about next steps. So if that's the case, I, I would like to see that information come forward.
I would, I would, I would point out that, well, we'll just have some general information. I, I, I mean, I don't know that I would be able to provide a a solid, this is the ordinance. So, uh, you know, we can provide a little research and let you know what's going on in the industry.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
I guess, uh, from what I heard from Tom, and I may have heard it incorrectly, but it sounded like when it was taken into consideration of putting storage facilities in commercial areas, it was the, the thought of the, the old-school garage-type-looking storage facility and not a unit like this. So I guess I would be, uh, in favor of looking at potentially this type of unit being in commercial zones, kind of like what you said for Cedar Rapids has some stipulations on it. So, um, again, I would support the staff, uh, looking into that type of, uh, situation.
And, and understand that you're seeing the, 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 the front side of the building. There is traditionalist storage being proposed with this project, um, with this, uh, the garages and the garage doors. So, um, you know, there's, it's not, uh, it's not one hundred percent of what you're seeing here. So like I said, there, there are some parameters. We can look at them. We can bring them back.
Hey, um, could I chime in a little bit or this is Seth Green?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, storage has evolved a little bit from the traditional-type storage to this multi-story. This is what we're doing in most cities. Um, and you, I, I guess I feel dumb on how this even came about because, um, I'm not sure why a moratorium was put on storage, but I, you know, if you put a moratorium on a certain industry, I would think that they would reach out to the industry itself and find out information. And then, um, the new zoning, um, we were allowed in six different zones and now we're down to two. And it's almost, um, exact opposite. So the Cedar Rapids one, um, the only conditions they put is to be in an office district. We can be in the commercial zoning with no contingencies or no other, um, information. But Cedar Rapids actually upped it so that, um, they would allow it in actually office districts because they see the benefit. And, um, with storage and it's changed, um, so nine point four percent of residents use self-storage. Um, the nine point four wanted within three miles of their house. Uh, those are just national statistics that, um, you can look up on Google or whatever. So this, they want convenience and, um, what this ordinance or the zoning would be, and I feel dumb about, I should have been at meetings when this was going on. I did not know. Um, I would have thought we would have been notified if you're going to do a dramatic change like this on a certain industry that you take it from six, you're allowed in six zonings down to two. Um, and, and then I was just tickled to death when this corner came up because that whole section right now, other than this lot, under the current zoning is zoned industrial. I thought that was Marion's industrial, um, park. And I thought, okay, this is perfect. This is a perfect spot to go because everything there is industrial. But then when the new zoning map comes out, they just edged on the, on the highway part of it, um, to do this B R district. So, and, and I wished I would have been at these meetings to comment because all the other cities are, um, they're welcoming storage. I can tell you, you know, this project here is between six and seven million dollars. I, I don't know how many projects come to hand for Marion that aren't publicly funded that are six to seven million. I think the building department said you have between seventeen and twenty-two million of, um, building permits for commercial. We would be one-third of that. Our project alone would be one-third of your whole year. Um, but you can look at our, um, our facilities. Uh, we're right, most of our facilities are right next to residential. Um, we're, uh, four of, out of, four out of our seven facilities are right next to residential houses. Um, the one in Marion currently is also next to, um, residential. And that, that was concerning to me that now they have changed my zoning on my existing facility that it's in this new B R and we would not be allowed to be, to rebuild there. Um, and I just, it's the exact opposite of what most cities are doing. A, a project like this, so if you guys don't know, um, this would bring you guys two hundred thousand dollars in property taxes. And, uh, self-storage is the only property that actually collects sales tax. And so you get directly one percent option tax. Um, so storage actually charges sales tax. And so with the one percent, that goes directly to the city and part of the six percent would go to the city too. But it's a huge benefit and, um, And I guess we've had customers say that they didn't even, they thought it was an office building. You know, the one in San Martin, one council member talked about that. We're right in a technology park. There's, it used to be G M A C, and then it was the A T and T Tower. We're right next door to them, and we fit in every day, no complaints. I can give you letters from all the cities that we built in. They welcome this type of project. And it's, it's almost the complete opposite in Marion. And when I look at the zoning map, the only spot that then Marion would be able to go is that industrial park. But the national trend is that they want to be within three miles of their house. So we, we actually wanted to go to the north part of Marion. But every time we've bought a project, they've always told us, no. I've tried to get a project for four years, and it's been very frustrating. Nobody wants to go to their storage place in an industrial park. It's, it's not safe. There's not traffic. They, they want high visibility so they feel secure and safe. If you're back in that industrial park on a weekend, most people will not feel safe in a storage unit. I can, I listen to customer comments all the time. They, I would invite you guys to look at Google review of our facilities and see what they say. They like the convenience. They like the building, and they like who we are. So.
All right. Any questions for Tom? On this, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, Steve, just as we go forward, could you give us the detail in the future on what is included in the new B R district? We keep referring to that, but again, I certainly, I may have looked at it once or twice in the past. But if we talk about this further in more detail, I'd like to have a copy of what is included in that district.
It's primarily a highway commercial district, so bigger box retail.
Okay.
Get the details, but that, that's, that was the idea. Highway 100, highway 15.
Anything else? Do you have what you need, Tom?
I do.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, number four, fiscal year '22 budget guidelines. There he is.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you. I'm not here early to vote. I'm here to talk about the F Y '22 budget guidelines. Yeah, ding ding ding. A lot of the information we're going to be covering today was a, was reviewed last month, or it seemed like a month ago, actually, the last meeting, when we discussed the five-year financial plan for the city. But I wanted to make sure that we articulate what's going to be included or what we plan to include in F Y '22 recommended budget that we'll be putting together. And we have some updated information on property tax valuation, which we'll be presenting in this presentation today, as well as going over the calendar from the council's perspective of what, when you, we'll be coming before you with, with the recommended budget as well as the tenancy budget and final budget. Next slide, if you could. So the general guidelines, high level. First and foremost, we want to make sure we adopt balanced and sustainable general fund budget. What this means is that our ongoing revenues are, are ongoing expenditures do not exceed our ongoing revenues. And if so, they're just for one-time items. Just last year, we did exceed those by about $335,000 for the new fire station. But absent a large capital project, we really should be living within the means of those general fund revenues on an ongoing basis. So we expect to bring you a budget with those parameters as well. Second piece, just to remind city council, and this is part of the, the five-year forecast and, and how things change each year, we get closer, is we're going to be, continue to use conservative revenue and expenditure forecast. So right now, as we talk about property taxes, until we know where we're at, we'll be using conservative estimates going forward, as well as on the revenue side. Local option sales tax as well as hotel motel, we want to make sure we hit those numbers. So in most cases, we're going to exceed those slightly. But, and just to let you know, the downstreams effect of that is over time. Then in normal economic cycles, we'll start building our reserve little by little, and then we'll have a little bit of room over time during economic downturns, which like to remind council that we are currently in one, in a recession. And it'll be interesting to see what goes on in the next couple of months, as, as Lon had mentioned previously, with COVID and the response for the United States. The next, next area is operating expenses from active C I P projects will be included in the operating budget. So part of the C I P that will be coming before city council during the, kind of during the time that we look at budget, we'll also see the operating impact. It's an important piece that we want to make sure to bring before council, because a lot of times we're constructing facilities or changes to large capital projects. There is also a change either to personnel and/or ongoing costs, and we want to make sure we're cognizant of. The fourth item in there, the proprietary fund balance targets. We started talking about this, I believe it was this last year, the cycles starting to blur together. But really want to make sure that we're, our proprietary funds and all our utility funds that need to be self-sustaining with enough revenue to support them also have sufficient operating reserves as well. We don't want those to get too thin at the margin. So we're going to be spending some time on talking about that in our five-year financial plan to really help in looking at the long-term trajectory of the rates that will be coming before you, as well as the expected impact over time with those. And then lastly, maintaining current service level, service delivery levels. It's, it's one of the areas that staff is, Tom mentioned it today, of the kind of heroic 300% increase that the building department has seen with the increase in permits and how they've been able to do that with some part-time staff, but primarily with their current staff, of finding different ways of, of doing business activity or trying to find efficiencies in there. So each of the departments, too, as they're looking for opportunities for this next year's budget, too, they'll be submitting any improvement packages for any opportunities that they'll need to, and will need to invest in a city to move forward to maintain certain current service levels, because mind you, we are a growing city. So over time, those pressures do increase in it or add to increased cost for the, for those service delivery areas. Next slide. But we'll start with the revenue side, just quick, two little pictures of showing buildings and community, because that's really property taxes. And if you go to the next slide, is the majority of where we get our general fund revenue. And as mentioned there, and it's the same figure that was presented to city council a couple of weeks ago, 81% of our general fund revenue is property taxes. So wanted to put up there the property tax formula, kind of only four components we're showing. It does get more complicated, but at the high level, property evaluations starts there. Afterwards, take out any credits and exemptions, multiply times that rollback rate for, for, across the property classes, and then multiply times the rate levy rate. For the most part, this is how our property tax system works here in Iowa at the highest level. And we're going to kind of break up some of these components to walk through where we think we may be ending up this next year, or in F Y '22. Next slide. So this has the, the three primary property classifications in there. The yellow line is commercial industrial. It's back in, and these are fiscal years at the bottom. Fiscal year '24, it, it was at 100%. And then it's, state legislature decided to reduce that by about 10% in a greatest scale. In 2016, it's been fixed at 90% each year. Right underneath that, you'll see multi-residential, and multi-residential has been declining on that, pretty much on that same trajectory, because they used to be considered at the same level as commercial. And the goal there is, is I believe it's in the next couple of years, when multi-residential goes down each year by 3.75, it will stay fixed to residential. Why that's important is though we've had a growth in multi-residential, a lot of the, fortunately, because we've had such high growth, it's actually led to more revenue we brought in as a city year-over-year, even though that, that valuation rate is going down. And the simple, or the math behind it is if you have, say, $100 in valuation, this next year, it's going to be going down to 67.5%. So we lose, we'd lose $3.75 on $100 each year, just on if the valuations stayed fixed. So that's something we've been watching each year. One other piece I should mention with commercial industrial, there, that's the reason why there's this thing called the industrial, the commercial rollback, which there's a slide towards that in a little bit that will talk about how much money that is and why that's such an important piece of our current revenue collections. And then residential, as we're moving through there, you'll see a small little uptick. So that's actually the increase to six, for this next year, 56.41%. Next slide, if you could, Tara. Why is this important? And these are the rollback numbers for F Y '20 and '21. And the '22 rate is really a '21 rate with a retrospective, and I'll walk through that. But the rollback rate in '20 was 56.91%, and there's decimals there. Why the decimals, we have them there, is that is multiplied times billions of dollars of assessment. So each decimal point does count. In F Y '20, F Y '21, that percentage rollback went down. So what that means is, say, for every, once again, $100 of assessment, this value, our, our property would be worth $55 in '21, where the year before, that same $100 was worth $56. So it actually reduced the valuation. This coming year, it increased it. So it's not as high as what we had in F Y '20, but it will increase it by a little over 1.3 total percentage points. That's a big deal. And what that means is, once again, in that calculation of valuation, the valuation set by the assessor's office based upon your, your market value of your home. We're not in an assessment year. So for most properties, they're not going to change value much unless you, unless they turned over and talking to the assessor's office, or there was a permit on them in which they went in and they updated a certain area. So it's really new growth. So with that, this next year, we're expecting to pick up about, presuming valuation did not change, about $32 million of raw value, of, of total valuations. What that would have equated to in this last year, that's about, make sure my figures correct, I think about $390 million of additional revenue if we kept our revenue, if we kept our property tax rate flat. Mayor's looking at me like, how does that work? Correct. And the way the, the numbers come together, once again, it's the valuation, the valuation set by the assessor's office. They take out the exemptions and credits. But then after that, this rollback is applied. So if this number would have gone, say, to 50%, it would have reduced the valuation of all those properties, because now if your property is at 100,000, rather than it being looked at at the 50, 56,000, it'd be looked at as 50,000. So this is one of the, to me, the opaque parts of the, of the property tax valuation process in Iowa, which makes it very difficult from my perspective, because as a, myself, I'm a homeowner. As I look at my rates, did my rates go up or down? Because the assessment rate went up and down, the rollback rate went up and down, or city council made a decision on one part of the rate, plus the school districts, plus any other taxing jurisdictions. So, once again, we, we take some time to go over this. We don't expect you to have it memorized, and that's why I kind of go over it a couple of times. But overall, what I expect this to do is, if nothing were to change, it would add, right now, at this point, if properties were at the exact same value this next year, this would increase property valuations by 1.8%. So I look out of the, out of the gates, there's a 1.8 increase on property valuation that is taxable. Once again, the taxable valuation, not the true valuation, starting this next year. And with that, I'll stop because.
I just have two quick questions. Can you remind us when we find out what that property tax rollback number is? At what point throughout in the year do we know that? And the second question is, is how often are homes assessed?
The property tax rollback by state law, it's the end of October. So we received these figures just this last week. They usually get it out a little before the deadline, which is great. But it's because we have to have our budget certified by the end of March. We have to start with the projections early. One of the things Councilman Jensen talked about around this last year is how can we get ahead of our budget earlier? The pros and the cons of it is, the earlier start, the less information you have to make determinations. So we're using, there's a lot of assumptions built in there. So we just got that figured, but what we don't know yet is we don't know the total evaluation. I have received some preliminary evaluations from kind of the first step, the assessor's office, and they're promising, meaning they're increasing, but I don't know yet what will be taken off in exemptions yet. So I, it has to kind of work through each step in the process. So I'm still being somewhat conservative. But from the onset, the way I'm looking at it, there's a 1.8% increase in total valuation year-over-year, which is, to me, a great, a great piece from a tax perspective. Doesn't clarify it anymore with the residents, because it does change every year. I wish it was fixed. That would be my recommendation, but it's not. So this is, and then where these dollars come into place is that F Y '22, it's the F Y '22 rollback number, but applied on last year's number, basically to say, if last year we kept the rate flat, instead of capturing $783 per household, it would have increased to $802. So it would have brought in almost $400,000 of additional revenue, just because of the rollback. Because once again, city council can only impact, but I should have mentioned the first slide, the tax rate. That's the only area under your purview to make changes to annually. The rest of it is in different areas of Iowa code. Does that answer your question?
It answers my first question. Second question, assessment, right? So you talked about this wasn't a year in which we're, to our assessment. So is that an every other year? Is it every, is that what it is? So every other year that happens?
On the odd years.
On the odd years? Thank you.
Yeah, they're required by law to do the assessments of all properties every odd year. But in talking to the assessor's office, I've become new friends over there. I think it's Jerry DeWitt. He's got a small group of staff, but they're very responsive, which is great. And he did, as they've been looking into it, the preliminary figures are looking promising, and that they do do updates during some of the permits, but it's depending on each individual case.
Thank you.
Any other question on this slide? This is the most complicated slide that's in here. So if you're good with this, we can, I promise the rest are easier. Okay, and there'll be more discussion if you want more later about that. So just looking, three different scenarios. Once again, now getting into that taxable valuation, no test at the end of this, growth projections. Low growth, this is what we modeled with the five, the five-year financial plan, low growth and off-years, 3%. That would bring in about $600,000 of new revenue. Non-debt service, that's a separate line item, but, because that's specifically for debt. In a medium growth, that's about 4.5% growth of last year's valuation. That would bring in about 900,000. It's actually higher than that. I just rounded it down. And then in the high growth, I put it 6% in there, each one by 1.5%. It would be $1.2 million. Next slide, if you could, Tara. So where I think it's going to end in my conservative side is the medium growth. It's depending on the new growth that's added this next year. There has been new growth added, but once again, we need to see what works through the system. So the expo, expectation I have in, in building the preliminary budget on the forecast, on the finance, or the revenue side, is that we'd be bringing in around 900,000 right now of non-debt service dollars coming into the city budget. We won't find out these figures until it's the end of December that they're required to let us know where we sit with that.
Are you taking the rollback into account with that?
I am. So there's a 1.8, just in total percentages, and let me know if I'm overly geeking out. 1.8% of that is the amount that I think is the, that I'm attributing to the same valuation rate across the board, new valuation, and then looking to say what would be an expected growth on top of that. Because the numbers I've seen, there will be an increase. I just don't know how much. Next slide. So it gets back to a question we asked city council last year, probably a little premature, but we wanted to make sure we let you know how we're looking at this. So what does that mean for, for the council's perspective? Because we could look at a flat rate, we could look at a reduction rate, we could look also at a rate increase. What we're going to be doing is we present the budget to city council and the recommended budget. We're look to present the scenarios in both options. We'll be presenting you one recommended budget. But as we're looking at it, we want to make sure we parse out to the opportunities that would be gained by going in a rate increase. And the reason is, is we'll talk to the expenditure in, in the next couple of slides. But it's, it's the other side of what we do in government of what is the value created by the additional tax increment that city council would be asked to, to increase the budget by? And it really reflects on the total dollars in the budget. Once again, these are all investments in the city. So we want to make sure we, we parse those out so that city council understands the taxing, or the, the dollar implications for each of those increases for this next year. Next slide, Tara. One of the other things that's just a reminder of this next year is a new legislation started in 2021 was this maximum property tax hearing. This is scheduled for, currently, we have it scheduled for, I believe, February 18th to go before city council. We'll have to make the decision before that, if you remember last year, because that's the date of the public hearing. It's usually a little, a little under a month beforehand that we need to make sure that we get that published, so that's. So that's residents have the opportunity to weigh in on that, if they have questions or if they'd like to give input on that on that figure. But this will be after the time that we'll have our recommended budget session with city council. So we'll be able to have total dollars behind the recommendation we put before you. But just to mention, kind of the second box there, is the public hearing on my maximum property tax is set as a two percent threshold. Marion is a growing city, as I just mentioned, I'm estimating right now that will increase without new construction by one point eight percent. So I expect us to go above that threshold, just like we did this last year. And that's actually the the reason I put those somewhat historic pictures in there. It to me, it's it's interesting to think back at what Marion was and to think forward to what Marion will continue will be in the future. And Marion's a growing community. So I would expect in the near future, unless we do have a sustained economic recession. And or something changes in our in most immediate market, that we would be exceeding this year over year, just with the growth of of the city. The demand on on services, as well as the maintenance of the current services we have in place. And a reminder, city council, the threshold will set pretty pretty high, in which it requires a two thirds vote, the city council to exceed that two percent. So it's purposeful when it when it's placed there, near unanimous decision by city council. In order to move forward a higher than two percent property tax rate. Uh, next slide, Tara. Commercial backfill I mentioned previously, this amount was the amount when you saw the dipping from a hundred percent assessments. To ninety percent assessment. And this is our highest assessed class. And as previously talked about, prior to this, as businesses come in, there is a. New businesses do bring in tax dollars. So the so the state came in and they, there's a formula behind this. But our allotment and FY twenty one is five hundred thousand, little over five hundred thousand dollars. But this is at the legislature's discretion on an annual basis. This is one of the things before them as well, to determine, should they continue this or not? We would hope that they would let us know if they were going to change it and do a a slow decline in support. Or or reduce that that figure over many years. But once again, it's it's in their, it's in their hands to make that decision. But if that were to change, that would significantly change some of the budget expectations on our behalf. Because we are expecting to get that around that same amount this next year. And next slide, Tara. And lastly, just a quick overview of the proprietary fund rates. We we talked about this, we're talking about the five year financial plan. And as we're looking at the rates, one of the areas that we want to make sure is that, once again, all of our proprietary funds are structurally balanced. We have enough revenue coming in to support that the expenditures going out of the fund. And if we're if we're starting to model that they're not, the recommendation is, we need to either seek more revenue or reduce expenditures. So that's one of the areas that we'll be looking for, all the proprietary funds, to make sure that we're modeling over a five year basis. Of how we're going to get them on a a strong fiscal position. And then what most important or importantly is what that would look for on the right side. Because as we're seeing increased costs over time, the expectation that we can keep all of our rates flat. And be able to provide the same level of services is just not reasonable for the majority of our of our funds. Especially with some of them that are getting some external pressures for the services that are outside of our control. And as mentioned, the five year, five year financial plan will help us in talking about that modeling over a five year continuum. Next slide. That was a revenue side. So good news overall, revenues expected to go up. Once again, we're a growing city. Like to mention, I didn't check the figures this year, but when I came to Iowa, only about ten percent of cities are growing. Marion is still a very high growth city. The the great problem we have, opportunity, is we have service demand upon us. And how do we continue to provide that? But we also have growing revenues. The question is, is how do we put those to best use? So this is the other side of of the equation, the expenditure side. And wanted to start with that of it of our vision statement, and I apologize, because when you put in this format, it kind of jumbles a couple of words together. But Marion is a forward thinking city with vibrant neighborhoods and abundant opportunities for all residents, businesses and industries. So this is one of the areas of special concern. Next slide, if you could, Tara. With our adoption of our FY twenty one through FY twenty three strategic plan. Because departments will be putting together requests for expenditures that they would be asking for. In order to move forward, each of the initiatives and move forward the growth of the goals in that plan going forward. There's five focus areas and fifteen goals underlying that. But this will be an area of specific focus this next year. Especially in the prioritization of resources, we'll be calling out X amount of dollars for strategic, which priorities? And do they align to the strategic plan or not? Is there a story behind that? Matrions. I've never been to the city of Matrion, but it's a good place to go. Thank you for, yeah. Yeah, that's that's a new spelling. Yeah, I I don't recommend adopting that spelling. Yeah, in there. No other priorities. That's okay. I'll have to double check that. Thank you for catching that well. Bro, as mentioned before, in the city council, the general fund budget is seventy five percent driven by personnel costs. So salaries, this is. Just placing before city council, again, the two point five percent that was that was mentioned in the five year financial plan. That we're currently budgeting for for this next year. But this is stipulated to on as we're looking at the three year, are all of our three labor contracts are for renegotiation. Some years they stagger, so we fire police and ask me all at the same time. So there may be some changes based upon how those negotiations are going. They've started the initial meetings with those, but we won't know where those sit likely for another couple of months. But just wanted to place that asterix in there, that that is an influencing factor in there. Next slide, Tara. And then on the benefit side, retirement, Ipers is expected to be flat, which is good news. There they have a long term projection that keeps it there and they just release their figures. So they are will be collecting the flat rate from the employer side. And then multiple are municipal fire and police, their rate, which talked about previously, is going up about three percent year over year. Or a little over one percentage point. So that is, that will be an increase that we will be absorbing in our next year's budget. The health insurance rates, as we talked about in this, in the five year financial plan. The employer contribution right now, we're we're having it planned out for eighty eight percent. This was actually placed into the fire contract for FY twenty or sorry, for FY twenty one. So we're modeling that this point for FY twenty two. And then the medical rate of increase is about six percent. We've got some preliminary figures from from our consultants, Gallagher and Gallagher is modeled slightly lower. But we're going to have a follow up meeting with them and we haven't had our meeting yet with Wellmark. Because one of the things we want to make sure we stay focused on is, we do expect some of our costs to be lower based upon the low utilization currently with COVID going on. So we want to make sure we don't get behind the rate coverage, because we're having lower than expected utilization for. Some of the surgeries that would normally be taking place. Uh, next slide. On the reserve side, this is preliminary figures that we're looking at. But one of the one of the areas we'll be bringing for city council is what percentage of our general fund reserve? Do we need to have in reserve? One of the preliminary numbers we're looking at is pegging that to somewhere around thirty eight to potentially forty percent. Of general fund reserve and then a balance of that, how would it go into an emergency fund reserve? I E. right now, derecha, of how do we pay for the city's cost share? We expect that to come out of multiple funds. And so that's one of the areas that we'll be very mindful of. As we're looking to see what revenue pickups we had from FY twenty one, and then where do we expect to end FY twenty two as well? So that is a will be a central focus going forward. The other area is also just equipment reserve, will be continued to look for opportunities to increase the transfers in over time. Because as presented to city council beforehand, that fund is starting to deplete in the amount of revenues available in that fund to pay for the ongoing cost for capital replacement. Uh, next slide, Tara. And now to the budget calendar. We did the presentation to city council and once again, I apologize with the the way it was. Cobbled together here of the five year financial plan on this past twentieth of October, November third today, we're doing the budget. I'm sorry, November, no, tomorrow's the third, November second, budget guidelines. And then we'll be coming before city city council on January twenty, we currently have built into a resolution, January twenty second and the twenty fifth. For the budget work sessions. One of the areas I wanted to bring up to city council is, one, do those dates work for city council? These were set, I think, a couple of years back with the idea of getting ahead of the planning to make sure that there's a sufficient amount of time. Set aside in your calendars, this is a Friday as well as a Monday. We're looking right now, and as we get closer to. The end of this month and it's the next month, we should be able to know where are we going to sit with how long the the presentations would be and the work sessions would be. Because ideally, we'd like to do it one day, but that would also include the capital improvement side. So one of the question for city council, if we can consult, one, do the days work? And if so, if we can consolidate it into one day, what is the preference? Mind you, on January twenty first, that is a city council meeting. My wife is watching. I'm sure she's not with the kids. That's her birthday too. Happy birthday. But if if we can consolidate it, is there a preference for the Friday or the day after a council meeting? Or Monday? And we we usually start at around nine o'clock and we try to finish up before four.
I prefer Friday.
Okay.
Monday's first day of classes at Kirkwood, so selfishly, Friday would be best for me.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, having it on a Friday and a Monday, wouldn't it be better to be two days in a row instead of a weekend in there? Just a thought, because then we.
You mean like a Saturday?
Yeah, we finish Saturday morning or something, but.
We we had that done in the past. We've had like a Friday, Saturday. And like Saturday was a half day or something or until one o'clock or I don't know. I mean, I'm I'm open to whatever everyone else, I have no specific feelings on it. Whatever everyone else is comfortable with.
Yeah, is it is is. Lon might be able to provide some perspective on on why the breakup for the days that was before me coming to the city. But from staff's perspective, I mean, we could, we're usually pretty flexible with how we move forward. But once again, Lon could provide some of the context, or I'm not sure if Rachel could on, and how the Monday Friday got placed instead of. Because.
Those of us that have to leave work for two days, you know, two workdays, it's a little harder.
Yeah, I would, if I could just jump in before staff jumps in, I would much prefer the Friday and a half day Saturday. We've definitely done that before, because I remember having that experience in my time on council. It it's impossible. I'm just going to be honest, I won't be able to take two full days off from work at that time of year. It's a super busy time of year for us. So I could dedicate one or the other, but a Saturday is obviously much easier. And I I do believe we've always wrapped these with one in like a half days. So I would prefer Friday and Saturday until lunchtime or something, if we can convince it.
Anything for me? Okay. I'll I'll take it back and oh, Lon, did you want to chime in at all or?
No, I just recall that one of the reasons that we did switch was just, we had a year or two where there were a significant amount of changes. Between the first day and the second day, and it was really tough to try to get those done between Friday and Saturday. But I would say that, you know, with the last time around, or even the last two times around, we really haven't run into that.
Is that the consensus? People would like to try that? Friday and and Saturday, as long as we need to go, you know, it's usually, I don't know, I think we've got, sometimes we've gone till one thirty or two, you know, two or noon. And it just depends on how how it happens, but I think that might be more doable for for people.
Okay, then what I'll do is I'll take it back with staff and see if there's any serious conflicts on the staff side. To see if they wouldn't be available during those days, but we'll we'll aim for the twenty first. I'm sorry, not the twenty first. Once again, it's my wife's birthday. I can never forget that date or I get in trouble. The twenty second and then the twenty third half day. And the next date after that, so. The expectation to is is on January twenty or during those discussions at the end of January, we're presenting you the recommended budget. So this is the budget that staff's recommending that we move forward with, after which, as Lon mentioned, there there may be some changes to it. Usually, if there's a wholesale change, that's a that's a pretty big change, because it's a, at that point, we make sure that we have clear decision points. To bring before city council, so we can have those, have the tentative budget turn around right after that. A couple of weeks later, we'll be coming to city council to, with the expectation that we can then arrive at, where do we look to? And the budget or have the budget by by mid February. And that would then place us in mid March for the final budget presentation to city council. It gives us also enough time, if something were to happen, either additional questions and or something happens in the economy. Or at the legislature gives us time to pivot and make those changes before final adoption on March third. Or we have scheduled for the final budget presentation is on a Tuesday. And then the final budget in public hearing would be on on a Thursday meeting on March eighteenth. And our last day for submitting the budget is March thirty first. So once again, we want to make sure we have ample time in case something were to come up, we could, we can move through those dates. But that's the budget calendar set before, or is currently laid out. And then with that, glad to take any additional questions. Once again, I appreciate all the engagement around the budget. And all the time you you spent this last meeting, because we did go very in depth in a number of areas.
Appreciate all your work. Any questions for back?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So just a quick question. You brought up salaries and those being a factor in our decision making. So when will the council be given the data and analysis on the compensation study? Because that's directly related, and I think that would help inform some decision making there.
I I can speak to on the budget side. We're working together with human resources as, I think everyone has met Kirsten. As she's coming to the city, or she's been with the city now, I want to say maybe a month. So she's getting up to speed with the compensation study. It's one of the areas that we're also looking at. Are there in any areas of potential positions for undermarket? Or any specific targeted areas we'd want to look at in the budget for salaries outside of also, what is the percentage recommendation? To maintain competitive within our region. So those are areas that we are currently looking at. So that will be part of the recommendation at the end of January, when we come together. But the reason I want to be very specific in how I respond to that is the compensation study itself, there's many different layers to it. That the budget process is not going to resolve all those. That's going to be a progression over. Multiple months and also over years in order to develop that compensation philosophy. And making sure that that fits where the city Marion is looking to go. And but that will be a component of what we look at with the salary recommendations in there for the FY twenty two budget.
But will we ever be given a presentation in an isolated manner, just on that study? It's something that we've asked for for a long time, and I feel like the data has been there. I know there's still, there are a lot of layers and it needs analysis. But, you know, I don't want to look at it in just like little sections here and there. I'd like to have a more comprehensive understanding. So will the council be given a formal presentation, kind of like what you're doing now tonight and what you did with the five year plan? I would assume that that would be really helpful for us to kind of understand it and be able to ask questions holistically. So that when you're applying it in a more precision manner, as it applies to our budget for the January meeting. We have a greater understanding of the the entire piece of data. Or all of the data, rather than just looking at it in little spots for specific instances.
That is one of Kirsten's priority projects. She has the the study and has been reviewing it. And so I'll get together with her and see if we can nail down what the schedule is. I know she had hopes to be a little further on it, but we've had a bunch of things come up that she's had to address that have kind of pushed it off. So we'll get together and let the council know. But yeah, I would agree, we definitely want to make sure that you have that data and see it presented in a holistic manner. Before we go through the full budget presentations.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And the storm response update is for Thursday, so that brings us to it brings us to the end of the agenda. Any other questions or comments? All right. Encourage everyone to go vote, if you haven't already voted, and we will see everyone on Thursday. Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Tonight.
Good night.